Good evening and welcome to Independent Nation. My name is John Richardson. I'm here tonight with my co-host, Bauman Yazdhanfar. Tonight is October the 8th, 2014, and we are approximately one month from the Toronto municipal elections. And our guest this evening, I think, is going to be, is going to provide us with great commentary on that. I'd like to introduce you to those of you who do not know, Karen, this is councillor Karen Stints, Ward 16.
Thank you. It's great to be here tonight.
And yeah, so really looking forward to getting the closest thing to the inside scoop, the inside perspective, not only on City Hall, but perhaps on the mayor's race. So thanks so much for joining us this evening.
My pleasure. Looking forward to it.
Well, thank you. You know, I'd like to tell you first, since this is, since I'm the host of the show, I get to say what I want, but I would have voted for you for sure. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. I would have voted for me too.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think you have excellent judgment then.
Thank you.
But I want to tell you something else, okay? That four years ago, I wanted to vote for Rocco Rossi as well. So, you know, so it may be that if...
That you're the keeper of lost causes, huh?
Yeah, well, not, not the keeper of lost cause, but maybe it's a bad omen if I want to, if I want to vote for somebody. But anyway, let's go back to the beginning. So I understand you're finishing your third term as a councillor for Ward 16.
I am. I've had 11 years at city council, and I've had the great privilege of doing many things, including being chair of the TTC. And so at the end of it, I, I thought, you know, it's been a great run, but it was time for me to move on. And my view was, I'm either going to move up or out. And as it was, I'm moving out.
Well, you know, the TTC isn't everything in this city. It's probably the only thing, you know, in terms of what really matters.
I agree. When you think about the number of people it serves, we, we serve 1.7 million riders every day on the TTC. So it is really the lifeblood of the city, and it has to work. And I think people felt it wasn't working very well, and there was a mandate to improve the service, as well as expand the system. And so both of those have started to happen, which I'm pretty pleased about.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, we, at the TTC, we took a customer-focused approach, and we implemented Presto, we implemented Wi-Fi in the subway system. We put new buses on the road, larger buses, new streetcars are going to be rolling out, new subway cars are rolling out with more information. They're going to be running more frequently so that more people can get on the subway and, and get downtown quicker. We've done a lot of work around social media, where we can tweet out information about next bus arrival, any delays that are happening. We've put information boards at subway stations so that people know before they pay if there's a delay on the system.
Now, that is helpful.
So it is helpful. It is helpful, and they can make choices around whether they want to enter the system or not. So we've done a lot of things really with the customer at the focus of how we're restructuring how the organization works. And, you know, we've made some, we've made some real progress. We're not there yet, but we've made some progress.
Well, you're never there yet. I mean, life is all about progress. But am I right in saying that the TTC is self, has to be self-financing?
Well, there's no transit system really in the world, other than Hong Kong, that's self-financing. We, we collect 70% of our revenues from the fare box, and we have a subsidy from the city of about 30% for the operating.
How much is that?
That's about $1.6 billion.
$1.6 million is the subsidy?
Uh, no, the subsidy's about $400 million.
$400 million.
Yeah.
And my question is, I ask previous guests in this show, especially about TTC, just since we are talking about TTC. When I arrived in Canada about 30, some odd years ago, there was talk about the expansion and all of these subways, and they wanted to put a subway between Shepherd to the, to Scarborough Town Centre, and they ended up ending at Fairview Mall. Why this thing is not being resolved? What is the impediment in the City Hall that there is too much talk and very little action about the expansion?
Well, there's no question that we've had, we haven't suffered from plans. There's been lots of plans, transit plans. What we've suffered from is lack of funding. And so City Council can't fund subway expansion on our own. We need the federal and the provincial government to come and assist us with that. We can fund part of it, and with the Scarborough subway extension of the Lord Danforth Line, we will be funding a portion of that subway extension. But we can't, as a city, fund all that on our own. And so we're relying on our partners to come and help us. And it's only been recently that our partners have come to the table with real dollars for expanding the transit system.
But provincial party, or provincial Liberal Party, or Liberal Government, committed itself, at least in the media, up to $29 billion over the next 10 years. Isn't that correct?
That is correct, but that's not just for Toronto. That's for the entire region. And so Toronto will be the beneficiary of about $8.6 billion, which will include the Eglington Cross Town, the subway extension in Scarborough, the Shepherd LRT, and the Finch LRT, along with the direct rail link from Union Pearson to the airport.
Who decides on which plan should be implemented?
Well, you know, that is an ongoing discussion, as we, as we like to have at City Council.
Because everybody has a map in his pack pocket.
That's right.
And just pull it out in every, in every debate. He says, oh, it is my plan, and you see, I can go home, and I just put a couple lines in the map of Toronto.
Yeah.
But the point is, who decides that? Is it TTC, the people in TTC, or people in City Hall?
Neither, actually. It's, you know, the old expression, the piper, the piper plays the tune, and they get to decide. And in this case, it's the province that is funding the transit. And so the province will ultimately decide what gets funded. We have a say, we have an input, we have, you know, we express our viewpoint and our preference, but ultimately, the province is the one that has the $8.6 billion, and they will decide how that money gets spent.
So they decide on which plan has to be implemented?
Well, they have their own plan through, through their agency.
They have another map in the...
Yeah, they have another map.
...quinn's block.
In other words, they have to prove before it is their funding.
Yes. Well, they have the big move, what's called the big move. And MetroLinks was a provincial agency that was set up specifically to fund transit expansion. So the province has their map, and, you know, their, things got a little derailed over the last four years, but now we're back on track, and we are building transit.
But just as a curiosity, I don't want to get to the debate on that, but if you have a provincial agency that sets like MetroLinks, and then you have TTC and councillors of the city of Toronto, wouldn't be a little bit of the conflict of interest that because everybody is looking after their own pocket, especially MetroLinks?
Well, you know, again, transit doesn't get built unless it's funded.
No, I understand that.
And we've, we've spent so much time talking about transit and talking about expansion, but we've never had the benefit of funding. So now the province is willing to fund, and the federal government is willing to fund, and we finally have a funded plan.
So that means you are going ahead with whatever plan is?
From my perspective, we need to move forward with the plans that are funded.
Oh, no, I understand we need to move forward. What I'm saying is from your, from where you stand, is it something immediate coming or in foreseeable future? Or is it for another two years from now, we are sitting and discussing the same thing?
Well, no, the Eglington Cross Town is under construction right now. Union Pearson Link will be open next year for the Pan Am Games. The construction on the Scarborough extension will begin once the extension to York University is complete. So there is a plan in place, and there is funding in place, and so these projects will go. And that really what council should focus on is what is the next major transit project that they want to see funded.
Do you see any amalgamation between TTC and MetroLinks?
Oh, yes. Well, I, no, I mean, I don't think that the TTC should be merged into MetroLinks. I think that there are ways that MetroLinks and GO can work better together, but I do think that the TTC should remain separate.
Before we get into the, your adventures in the mayor's race, I'd like to take you back to how you got into city politics in the first place.
Yeah, it was about 11 years ago to the day, almost, that I was actually helping John Tory in 2003 run for mayor. And I got interested in municipal politics, and in the neighborhood that I lived in, there was some discontent with the incumbent councillor. So I decided I wanted to throw my hat in the ring, and I did. And as it happened, I ended up winning that election, much to the amazement of myself and the incumbent councillor. So, but it was, it was great.
So it was like, so I'll use a football analogy, give you an interesting, so you were drafted?
I was drafted, yes, yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's unusual.
It was.
And what percentage of the vote did you get the first time?
The first time, I think I, I got less than 50. The second time, I got more than 50, and then my last election, I had 63.
63. That is very, very high. Would that have been close to the highest of all the elected councillors, 63%?
It would have been up there. I think Michael Thompson had something like 89%. So he was probably the most, he won the most popular vote.
That's extraordinary. And Egerton Lawrence had a high voter turnout as well?
We tend to have a high voter, higher voter turnout than, than the average. What's interesting, actually, is if you look at where people vote, it's fascinating. The highest voter turnout happens around the subway corridors.
Well, as I say, TT subway isn't everything, it's the only thing.
It's the only thing.
It's all that really matters. I've always wondered, you know, it seemed to me that given that money's the issue with the transit funding, although it's, I'm sure, politically unpopular, any thoughts, discussion, of simply trying to fund it through higher property taxes?
Well, that's how we funded the Scarborough subway extension, that we raised property taxes 0.6%, 0.5%, and 0.6% over three years, and that money, over 30 years, would go to fund the debt that we would acquire as a result of building that piece of infrastructure. So we had, we did do it this term, and, you know, I think Rob Ford was probably the only mayor that could have gotten away with it, having a tax to fund major infrastructure projects. Because he was also the one that was railing against tax, respect for taxpayers. So if Rob Ford was going to raise a tax to fund infrastructure, people believed that that was the right thing to do.
It had to have been justified.
It had to have been justified. Yeah.
You have been there for almost 11 years, you said?
Yes.
And out of these 11 years, of course, about seven years of that was David Miller was the mayor. And over those seven years, at least I noticed that a lot of benefits, a lot of privilege given to the union, unions, let me put it this way. And that put a damp on the budget of the City Hall. What is your take on that? Where, where you stand on that? Do you agree with what he did, what was done at his time? Or do you prefer to be a little bit, bring it down and subside the whole process of the giving away a lot of things, a lot of privileges to the unions?
Well, I was very opposed to that labor contract that David Miller saddled with the unions after the garbage strike.
Yes, that was one of the, that was beginning of that, actually.
Yes, and, and it was my position and my feeling and my belief that the city and council had come together to say to the union, listen, we can't have these generous contracts. We can't, we only can, we, we have to do what we can afford to do. And beyond that, we need to work together to figure out how we can rein in these costs. And after a six-week strike, the city was still willing to continue to fight the fight. And yet then, there was, the administration caved. And we didn't achieve what we wanted to achieve, which was a big disappointment to all of those people who had said, yes, we will continue this fight with you. So I think that was really the beginning of the discussion about how it is that we are negotiating with our, with our labor unions, and what can we afford to pay, and what is the expectation of the public.
Would you say that was the beginning of the rise of Rob Ford?
There's no question in my mind that that was the beginning of the rise of Rob Ford.
So in other words, Rob Ford owes a mayorship, so to speak, to David Miller.
There's no question. That Rob Ford is David Miller's legacy.
Yeah, I agree with you totally. So why do you think, I mean, recognize we're going back a number of years, but, I mean, I remember being extremely hostile to the idea of caving to the unions as well. Why did the administration do that? You know, particularly since there was strong, strong popular support against not doing something.
You know, it's still a mystery to me, because it, at the time, I remember the union leader had said that if there wasn't any progress on the negotiation, then he was going to go to the province and declare it a health hazard, and that request intervention. And then, but there was no health issue, that it was actually, even the weather cooperated. Remember that? The year was, actually, wasn't even that hot.
I do remember that.
So there was no imperative. The province was not going to intervene in this labor disruption. They were willing to let the parties work it out. There was no call for mandatory arbitration, there was no return-to-work legislation, none of that was on the horizon. But when the union threatened to take it to the province, suddenly, the administration caved into their demands. And it was, it was a real disappointment to people.
And by administration, you mean councillors, or are you talking about the brokerages?
Well, it was negotiated by the Labor Relations Committee, of which David Miller was the chair.
Okay. And now, I want to ask you a little bit...
Sorry, just one second. To what extent do you think they're contributed to David Miller's decision to not run again?
Well, after the, after that strike, so the strike ended in the latter part of July, and there was a poll done in August, and David Miller's popularity had fallen to about 15%, which is unheard of for an incumbent mayor. I mean, even Rob Ford, and after his scandals, didn't fall to 15%. And so it was a blip. I don't think that his, you know, over time, I think it probably, he would have regained public confidence. But when, when an incumbent mayor looks at polling at 15%, he begins to question whether or not he can and should run for reelection.
Do you think he could have been reelected?
I, I don't know. I think that, you know, there were things that happened after that were very detrimental to the quote-unquote "administration." And I think the other thing that happened was when Kyle Ray threw his $12,000 retirement party. That was just, I think, the final nail for, like, that was just the final insult for people.
You were a nail on the coffin.
There was a nail in the coffin, and that gave Rob Ford all that he needed to continue to talk about the gravy train. And his message was very clear. He was going to shake up City Hall. That message resonated with people from across the spectrum. It wasn't conservatives that voted for Rob. There was a lot of people who voted for Rob. And, and it was because of some of the things that had happened under David Miller.
Well, Rob Ford also struck me as being one of those rare city politicians with very wide geographical support across the city. I, I was very certain, very early, that Rob Ford was going to win. And it was interesting to me that the major media outlets were just in shock, you know, disbelief. How could this be going on? It's as though, you know, there's this complete disconnect between, you know, what the media thinks is going on, and what's, what's going on in the street.
Yeah. Well, it's even happening today, in that I, because I'm out campaigning for other councillors. I'm not running again, I'm not going back to City Hall, but I want to make sure that good people go back to government. So I've been spending my time campaigning. And I've been campaigning in Scarborough and Etobicoke, helping councillors in those areas. And there, it's, you know, I see Olivia Chow signs, and I see Doug Ford signs. I don't see John Tory signs in those areas. And so the poll, the latest poll came out that had Doug almost neck and neck with John Tory, and there was a dismissal of those poll numbers, as if they couldn't be possibly accurate. And I think it is to our detriment to assume that this race is over. I think we can still see a lot happen in two weeks, because there is a disconnect between the mainstream media and what's happening out in those, in those neighborhoods.
Maybe the printer is not producing enough signs.
Could be. It could be, that they, that there's a run on signs, that they're all in my neighborhood.
Let me ask you, you said you were campaigning right now. Are you kind of the, in John Tory's kind of the team, or are you campaigning for him or in...
No, no, I'm only campaigning for individual councillors. I, no, I've, I've chosen not to endorse a mayor, and I'm not endorsing anybody that's running in my ward.
Because you mentioned that you were, you were recruited 11 years ago.
Yes.
Let me ask you something. Again, come back to the, for, even for our viewer, for education, for, I want to ask you this, that we know that there is no party name on the ballot when it comes to the municipal election. But I notice, or at least I'm certain, that most of the councillors, one way or another, affiliated to one of the three major parties, Liberal, Conservative, and NDP. Why we, going back to David Miller era, do you really, do you believe that part of the, that caving in or giving up on the union contract was because mainly we had more NDP here in the city council?
Well, yeah.
Or left?
No, I mean, there was, there was no question that David Miller was an NDP mayor. He ran as an NDP candidate.
But we had council, he has only one vote.
For the provincial, yeah, no, but provincially, he ran for the NDP.
Yeah.
And so there was never a question about his politics, and he presented himself as a progressive councillor, and, and he believed in strong labor rights. And so that was never in question. And, but any, and he had the support of council. When Doug Ford, or sorry, when Rob Ford was elected, there was a different mandate. And, and the council makeup changed slightly, but also the mandate from the people changed dramatically. And so different decisions were made.
And do you see any changes in this coming, because this coming election is very, very volatile, is very polarized.
This is an interesting election for me, in that usually, an election is a change election or a stay-the-course election. And, and the Liberals, we saw in the last election provincially, it ended up being a stay-the-course. People felt that, you know, the economy was recovering, people were relatively satisfied. In spite of all the scandals that were swirling about the, the current government, Kathleen Winn had managed to present herself as different from Dalton McGinty, but able to continue on the course that people were genuinely satisfied with. And this municipal campaign, I think it's largely the same thing. People agree with the fiscal approach that has been taken.
Stop the gravy train.
Stop the gravy train, keep the taxes low, look for efficiencies, find ways to do things better, make City Hall more accountable. Those messages continue to resonate with the public. The public just got tired of the ongoing circus at City Hall. And now, it's interesting, because now that Rob, so there was a change the mayor, but not change the course. Now, Rob Ford's not there, and the dynamic will shift again, I think.
So you mentioned that you were out campaigning for good councillors, people you thought would be good councillors. What's a good councillor?
Somebody that understands the needs of their community, but also can recognize that there's larger city issues. And can, can be at council, bringing the perspective of their community to the, to the floor of council, but also making decisions on, on behalf of the whole. And there's some councillors that can do that, and some councillors that are very, very narrow-minded, and making vote, making decisions only on their community, not with a bigger picture.
Or perhaps the other way around.
Yeah, or perhaps the other way around.
Ideologically aligned to certain parties.
Exactly. So I've been out supporting councillors that are pragmatic. Mark Grimes, there's a councillor running against Ron Moser, that I think she's very competent, very effective, and so I'm supporting her.
So it's interesting that, you know, I mean, you've obviously been very successful as a councillor, for no other reason but your managing to run the TTC. You made the decision to leave, which I, although I admire you, I think is good, because I do believe in term limits. What are your thoughts on term limits?
I believe that people grow out of their job, and they should grow out of their job. And you shouldn't stay too long. I don't know what too long is. For me, it was three terms. For different councillors, it's two terms. So I, I think it really does depend on the councillor, but they don't, they also need to recognize that they shouldn't stay beyond when they're being effective. And, but ultimately, the public will decide when they've had enough, and the public will decide for change. And we've seen incumbents being unseated more and more often, which I think is healthy.
As a councillor and as a chair of the TTC, of course, what is your typical day look like?
That's interesting. It's never the same day.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, first of all, are you, do you have to be in the office every day?
Well, as chair of the TTC, I tended to be in the office more.
Yes.
Just because the TTC, it's in the media every day, for one thing or another. The TTC, for good or for bad, is in the media every day. So there tends to be a lot of focus, and there's usually something happening that needs to be addressed. So that kept me busy. But I also would spend time in the community, because I didn't have a constituency office. So I needed to be present in the community for those local matters to get resolved.
Yes, the reason I brought this issue up, because over the last two weeks, since Doug Ford came to the, to the scene as a, as a candidate for, many people criticized him about not being present for the voting, or not, that his attendance was low. I just want to get a grasp, when a person gets elected as a municipal city councillor, is there any obligation, like any other job, that you have to punch the card, or at least you have to be there in certain many, or hours, or minimum amount of hours or not? Is like a...
No. The requirement is, if you miss three council meetings in a row, then your seat becomes vacant. But council can also exempt you from that requirement. And so we saw cases like Ron Moser, where he was gone half the time, for reasons, some to do with his health, and some for other, other instances. But, you know, we've seen councillors be away on holiday, go away for four months. It's not uncommon.
What you mean when they went missing for three times, the seat become available? That means they can add, put another election, or choose someone else to...
Yeah, if you, if you miss three council meetings in a row, your seat can be declared vacant.
And who decides that?
It would be council. If council did not excuse the absence, then council would decide that the seat would be vacant.
Is it the sort of thing where if somebody's vacant, if somebody doesn't show up three times, there's definitely a referendum on the issue, or for the most part, there's not?
For the most part, there's not, no. Typically, if a councillor was in a position where they could no longer serve, then they would advise council that their seat would be vacant, and then there'd be a by-election. Or they got another job, or they ran for another level of office. And that's what happened with Peter Milchin and Adam Vaughan and Doug Holliday.
You mentioned, Mr. Vaughan, are you thinking, are you seeing yourself in the provincial or federal politics?
No, no, my political career is over.
Are you sure about that?
Well, you know, I never say never, but I, I'm looking forward to life outside of politics.
Let me be a little bit of the devil advocate.
Well, how do you see it as different outside of politics?
I just, I'm looking forward to doing things in the not-for-profit sector, or in the sports realm, and just because there are so many things going on in the city that are interesting and exciting, and city building, that don't involve necessarily political life, that I can see myself making a contribution in another way that is exciting.
Are you referring to CFL?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Now that you bring that up.
Okay, let me, let me play a little bit of...
And how would you reform or evolve the CFL? What would be your plans there?
Yeah, well, the CFL is actually in a great place right now, with the exception of the Argos. We need to find a home for the Argos. And there is some work to get them into, I believe they should be at BMO Field, down by the exhibition. But once the Argos get stabilized, the league is in a very good shape. And it's an exciting time. It's expanding, it's growing, its popularity is increasing, and it would be great to be part of that.
Are you confirmed to be a commissioner?
No, no, the search process just started yesterday.
Okay, I want to...
Yesterday, you say?
Yes.
Yes. I want to play a little bit of devil advocate, and that is what I heard about a month ago, or a month and a half ago, when you announced that you're withdrawing from the race. And because CFA, John Tory used to have that position in the past, some speculated that it was some sort of the agreement between you to give up in exchange to that seat. Is, is there any truth to that?
There is no truth to that. There is none at all.
No, we want to, we did in the record, because I...
Karen, what would be your thoughts on having an NFL franchise in Toronto?
So I'm, I'm probably in the minority, that I actually don't think an NFL franchise would do well in Toronto. I, number one, we'd have to build a billion-dollar stadium, and there's, I don't know, there's an appetite for that. Secondly, it takes a while to build that solid base for the home team. And everybody in Toronto loves NFL, but they love their own team. I like the Ravens. My husband likes the Patriots. Other friends like Green Bay.
Okay, you must have had some difficult moments in the last few years.
We did, yeah, we have, yeah, we watched separate, we watched when the Ravens play the Patriots, we're on separate floors of the house.
Separate floors.
Yeah. And so it, you know, it takes a long time to build a franchise. And, you know, someone who is moving an NFL team here, wouldn't expect to have that loyalty and that fan base for at least a decade. And that's a long time to make an investment in a very, very expensive market.
Including moving the Buffalo Bills to Toronto.
Yeah, well, that's not going to happen now, because that, the Bon Jovi deal didn't go through. It's been sold now to the owner of the Sabres. So they're staying in Buffalo, and I don't imagine any other US team leaving.
Actually, that would be the end of Buffalo culture. Have you ever been to a Bills game?
Oh, they're fabulous.
It's incredible.
It's also interesting, in that the Bills are the only team that actually plays in New York. The New York Jets and the Giants, they play in New Jersey.
The only team that plays in New York State.
Yeah.
And probably one of the few left that plays in sub-zero temperatures.
Yes, with an open dome.
That's right.
Other than Green Bay.
I mean, it's an event. You know, you go there, and people have camped out with fires, and they're making hot dogs.
It's fabulous. It's fabulous. Yeah, no, I've been to a couple, I've been to Atlanta, to see a game in Atlanta. Been to, obviously, Baltimore to see the Ravens play, and to the Bills.
It's going to be such a deep wound to the city of Buffalo, to lose the Bills. I really, I guess that just could not happen.
No, I mean, that city is going through enough hard times. I don't think they'd want to see their Bills go.
Well, like a D3.
Right. And actually, they won a couple of games this year. I think they're what, what's their record now, 3-2?
I'm not sure. I don't follow them. I actually generally don't follow until we get to the playoffs.
Okay, when it gets interesting.
I'm also a Patriots fan.
Right.
I just only watch the commercial in the play. Going back to the city, beside TTC in last 11 years, what other things that was really hot topics, like economy, employment, housing, which one of these major issues that affected ordinary citizens were you involved with?
You know, again, different areas of the city are impacted by different things. At Young and Eglington, one of the biggest challenges we had was development, and intensification, and the building of condos, and how that was all going to fit within stable neighborhoods, and what it meant when a four-story building was replaced with a 19-story building.
What does that generally mean in the neighborhood?
It means a lot of anxiety, and in some cases, quite a bit of cynicism about the process, because it's not a transparent process. And people don't feel included in it, they don't feel part of it. They feel like this change is being done to them, as opposed to them being part of how their neighborhood grows.
Would you agree with that assessment?
And I, yes, I would, in some cases. And so what we did in the neighborhood is that we put a planning framework in place before applications came in, so that there was a better buy-in from the community around the kinds of development that we would see. And also created more transparent expectations with the development community, and the community that they were building in, around what we would want to see in terms of growth.
But I mean, is there, on the neighborhood level, I would have to think there'd be a general presumption against wanting condos built. Is that right?
It's interesting, because in 11 years, the community evolved quite a bit, in their understanding of why growth was important. And the things that started to matter were making sure that there was no wind tunnel effect. That if there was going to be a condo, and if it was going to have height, that it'd be set back from the street, so that there wouldn't block the sunlight on the patios, because that was an important part of Young Street, to have those patios. And so, different things started to come up as issues, which were actually more relevant to the quality of life.
Of course, this would be hugely integrated into the transit system as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then with the Eglington Crosstown coming through, there's additional development pressure in that neighborhood, and it's hard to manage.
You think there's too many condos growing up in Toronto?
You know, I don't, I can't say what too much looks like. You know, at some point, the market will decide. And, you know, I think we are nearing that point, because we are seeing that there is a slowing down.
Even in a very low interest rate climate.
Yeah, because again, there is also, there is different demands, and there's only so much demand for a 750-square-foot condo. And downtown, we see it around the universities, we saw those condos come up as an alternative to student housing, in that people were looking at condos and moving into condos instead of student housing. And so that was where we saw quite a bit of growth. Liberty Village is a remarkable neighborhood that's been transformed. But we are now experiencing the results of that success, and the consequences of not having sufficient transit, not having sufficient services to those.
And congestion.
And congestion into that community.
And let me ask you, because you brought the issue of the citizen not being happy with the improvement or development of the high-rise building. It brings the question of the role of the OMB, and the contradiction of the OMB with the decision of the city. I have heard, even while I was running as a candidate provincially, there was a lot of complaint, or a lot of concern about the people, or people even inside the bureaucracy, that say, okay, we follow the rules, we give them either permission or not the permission, but they just go in to OMB, and from back door, they come back with the override our permission, or lack thereof. What is your take about existence of OMB?
Well, we're making steps to make our planning decisions be controlled by the city, and have the city have the final say. And so we are setting up a local appeal body for committee of adjustment decisions, so that those decisions are not appealable to the Ontario Municipal Board. There, when it comes to issues like rezoning employment lands, the city has the final jurisdiction over that rezoning. So we are slowly becoming more autonomous around our decisions with respect to land use, and I think that trend will continue. We are beholden to the province and to the federal government for their assistance. And we've had some success getting gas tax money and federal investment into transit and housing. But we are at a point where we are stretched in our ability to provide the services that people expect with our current revenue base. Whether it's an income tax, or it's a sales tax, you know, again, if it applies just to the city, then there's a question of, does it make us uncompetitive? And we don't want to do that at a time when our economy is starting to rebound. But there also is a question, how much can we really do with our current tax base?
You said that you had some success to get part of the gas tax?
Yes, we do. We have, some of the gas tax from the provincial and federal government goes directly into capital improvements for transit.
The reason I'm saying that, because I had a guest, Sue Wong, who is a member of the parliament, a member of Queen's Park, and she was re-elected, of course, from Scarborough, I think it's a junior court. She said that they have some impediment in the process of getting that payback from the federal government to their own share, to pass it through the city. I'm just wondering, if they had problem or delay to get their share of the gas tax, how could they pass it to you without getting it from the federal government?
Well, we, the federal government, it goes directly to the city, so we don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't know what that impediment might look like.
Just accounting process, to get it calculated, to send it, there is always delay. Six months, three months, four months.
But it's not that material in the grand scheme of things.
That is not material.
No.
I want to go back again to the OMB and the issue of the council and development. Can you tell us about this Section 37?
Yes, so Section 37 is in the Planning Act, as a provision that if you, if the developer builds something that's more dense than what is dictated by the planning, by the bylaws, that the developer is, can be asked to pay a Section 37 benefit, which is a cash dispensation for infrastructure in the community that's affected by the development.
To whom?
To the city.
To the city?
Yeah.
So isn't it the kind of the way that I can get away, just by paying off the city?
Well, so the city has typically kept their zoning lower. So the city would say, even though we know you can build 10 stories here, we're going to zone it at four, so that we can get the Section 37 benefit. But what that's done, it's created a lack of transparency, and it also has created confusion in communities who expect that the zoning is actually indicative of what should get built.
Yes.
And what's interesting is, the city of Toronto is the only municipality that uses Section 37 as much as we do.
Because I had some candidates, in different wards, of course, in this show, they were objecting, they were saying, again, I'm just repeating what they say, that Section 37 is a kind of the open door for councillors to have some sort of the good dealing with the developers in their ward. I don't want to go to that, to insinuate it is in the form of the payoff, but I mean, it was...
So there is, throughout the city, development happens quite a bit in certain wards, and less so in other wards. And so, Ward 20 as an example, Trinity Spadana had quite a bit of development, quite a lot of Section 37 money. So the councillor, Adam Vaughan, was able to reinvest quite a bit of money in the local parks. And so the parks down in Trinity Spadana are gorgeous. If you go to other areas of the city, the parks are more distressed, because they don't have the same access to development, and the same access to Section 37 as other areas of the city do. And so there is an inequality that happens, where some areas of the city aren't being invested in in the way that we should be, because of the over-reliance on Section 37 and developer money.
Who decides on this expenditure after the Section 37 was exercised?
Well, the Section 37 is tied right to the development. So as the development gets built, the Section 37 gets issued to the city.
But is there any assurance it goes to the community where the development is...
Because it's all tied as part of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
That's interesting. So, I mean, one then could see development as a way to improve the community in general.
Yes, and it has. And so I've been able to invest over...
Come to a meeting, I mean, I would have to think that everybody who goes is there to complain.
Well, I mean, their view is, listen, a stop sign is not a guideline. It's a bylaw. You have to stop. A parking bylaw is a bylaw. It's not a guideline. So why is a zoning bylaw a guideline? And so it's not, it doesn't make any sense to the average citizen.
And is legitimate.
And it's a legitimate position. And so the position we took as a community, when Avenue Road, we rezoned all of Avenue Road. And we made a decision as a community that we would forego Section 37, and we would put the zoning in place to see, we would want permissive zoning. So we didn't want any higher than seven stories. So we zoned it for seven stories. And we knew that we wouldn't get Section 37, but the...
You also knew you'd only have seven stories.
We always knew we had seven stories, so there was that trade-off there, and that the community was willing to make that trade-off.
At least they know beforehand what is going to happen.
Well, and so does the developer, so they don't overpay for land. The community doesn't have, the community has expectations that are met, and it's a better planning process.
Do you have any suggestion from your perspective to resolve the whole thing in all wards around Toronto? Because you said, some wards can get, let go of the Section 37, but other wards stay with it.
Well, we are moving to what's called a permissive zoning. In certain areas of the city, we're trying it to see if it works. So that we have zones where you only can build what the zoning says, and you can't appear.
And how are those designated?
There, well, there's three sites, and the council has designated the three sites, and one of the sites is around Young and Eglington. And there's two other sites, and we're going to try and see if it works.
So out of the 44 wards, we have only three sites, three wards that they get rid of the Section 37.
Of course, I mean, you know, going back to your definition of good councillors, those who are responsive to their communities, I mean, you know, what this discussion makes clear, is that there's a huge responsibility on these councillors to pay attention to what their constituents want, which is, I guess, what makes municipal politics very different from provincial and federal.
Well, and we aren't bound by any caucus or party guideline or party viewpoint, that we are, you know, my boss, my direction comes from the community. And so there, you know...
I'm glad you said my boss is community. You're the first one who said that.
And there's no question. And so when I, in my last, when I last ran for council, people would say, who do you support for mayor? I said, you know what, I will work with whoever's the mayor, because that's how I serve the community in the best way, shape or form. I know who I'm going to vote for, but my vote is only one.
Yes.
That the city will elect the mayor as a community representative, I will work with whoever's the mayor.
So I mean, if you were ever to come back into politics, would you consider running for a party provincially or federally, or are you so opposed to the idea of parties that you would not?
I'm not opposed to the idea of parties. I actually believe that parties serve a very valuable purpose at the provincial and federal level.
But not at the municipal level?
Not at the municipal level.
What would be the difference?
Because the municipal level of government is consensus-based. It's actually designed to force people to build consensus. And whereas the provincial government and the federal government are a party, so if your party wins, it's the expectation of the public that you have a mandate to govern for four years. City council is very different. The mayor gets elected with a mandate across the city, but is always required to get the support of council.
Okay, so that's what it is. Do you think it'd be better to have parties in municipal politics?
No, because I actually think we get better decisions when we're forced to come to consensus. It's noisy and messy, and we tend to yell at each other, and then get accused of behaving like children, which we sometimes do. But it's also because it's all open, and it's all public, and our debates are public. And yet, that, the forcing of council to come to consensus means that you've pretty much, pretty much satisfied the majority of the city.
But wouldn't that principle work well in federal politics, for example?
It could, but given that we have a parliamentary system, it's just not designed that way. So the city is designed in a unique way.
Well, parliamentary system is not designed based on the party neither, it is just, party came later. But having said that, just let me ask you, are you a card carrier of any party?
I am no longer a card-carrying member of any party.
No longer?
No longer.
Okay. So, no, the reason John brought the issue of the, because we, John and I both believe in the participation and having, as you said, consensus of the electorate and the constituents in decision-making process in all levels. We have Westminister parliamentary system, you're correct, but nowhere in that process mentioned in the name of the party. However, we have the party, and now the party politics trumps people's politics, at least federally and provincially. But coming back to the city, if we did have a party system in the city, don't you think that the councillors that are elected as a majority could work better for the people, in the sense of the consensus I am talking about?
Well, it would be clearer, I suppose, but then again, you'd have the mayor, you'd have the mayor running as a leader of a party, instead of across the whole city. Because you would not want a situation where a mayor gets elected, and then a different party from the mayor becomes the council.
No, but if you had a party, let's say, I compare it with the federal government. Right now, we have majority conservative with Stephen Harper. Some people, I mean, some people really dislike the process, but they still, they have the majority.
Sure, but again, remember, Stephen Harper, he's the Prime Minister, but he's also the leader of the party. The party can decide to replace him.
Of course, the same principle.
Only the people can decide to replace the mayor.
But when we, if we change it, then a couple of things will be tweaked in that.
That's right. Yeah, and you could change it. You could fundamentally change it, so it looks very different.
Well, on the issue of the structure of Toronto politics, 44 wards, right number? Too many, too few?
Yeah, I think there's too many. I think there's too many councillors that are, I think we could cut it in half. Actually, I wrote an editorial for The Star that'll be coming out later in the week, about how we could reform council, to cut the number of councillors down to 22, and have them focus on the local issues. But then, as a balance, elect people at large, so that you have a citywide view for the citywide issues, and then you have less councillors focused on the local issues.
So you mean, local constituency replaced additionally the 22 that you're thinking? Because right now, we have only 22 wards for the school trustees.
Yes.
That's correct? This is half of that.
And for MPPs, same thing.
Yeah, for the MPPs as well, the same thing. So if we have that, how you manage to have that local constituencies to work with that 22 councillors, without overlapping another bureaucracy?
Well, again, you'd have your 22 councillors focused on the local issues, and then you'd elect at-large councillors to focus on the TTC, the police, works, construction projects, major capital projects, infrastructure projects. So you would change the decision-making at City Hall, and you'd have local matters dealt with by local councillors. You'd have citywide matters dealt with by elected councillors that are elected at large.
And how many elected at large?
Eight. Two per district, that would work with the mayor. And those at-large councillors would form the executive committee.
Can you just elaborate on how you came up with the number eight?
Well, there's two per district, so there's two for the north, two for the south, two for the east, two for the west.
Okay, okay, very good.
And the role of the local councillors would be to, what, advise?
Well, no, they would deal with fence exemptions, they would deal with tree bylaws, they would deal with local developments, they would deal with all matters local.
Okay, so now there should be sort of the difference between infrastructure and carrying on life within the infrastructure.
That's correct.
Are you in favor of having, if such a proposal go through, or at least been considered, are you in favor of having one of those elected individuals to be as the head of the OMB?
Well, the OMB is provincial, and so...
I mean, do you have a member in the OMB, I mean, elected member in the OMB?
Oh, no, I think we should just fundamentally reform the OMB.
Oh, okay. So you're in favor of that?
In what way?
That they wouldn't, they wouldn't make decisions on the actual application, they would make a ruling on the process. So was the process rightly applied? Did the city use its own rules and bylaws and official plan in coming to the decision? Did council consider all the evidence when they made the decision?
So like an appeal court?
Like an absolute, and then if the OMB decides that, in fact, council did not consider everything, they send it back.
So it'd be like an appeal court, yeah, interesting.
I wrote something in the last provincial election, just recently, provincial election, just a paragraph or two for one of the local papers. And I compare OMB and the member of the OMB as like a senate in Canada.
Yes.
Because they are elected, they are not, sorry, they are selected, they are not elected. Because they are elected, they are not, sorry, they are selected, they are not elected and there is no supervisory body on, and we have number of those crown corporation or local, provincial corporation which they do such a thing. What your take is on that, do you really want to have that much of interference of the provincial in the local issues?
Well, you know, again, the OMB is a, it, it has a function and a purpose for municipalities all over the province, so the, the needs of Bracebridge are different than the needs of Toronto.
That is my point.
Right, so Bracebridge, yeah, Bracebridge probably doesn't mind having an OMB because they don't have to set up their own local planning body, they can, they can now have those matters dealt with by the provincial government. But in terms of Toronto, we are a bigger city with our own official plan, we have reasons that we have requirements for developers to adhere to such as wind, light, shadowing, impact, and those are important things that the city considers that the OMB doesn't consider that we need them to start considering.
That is exactly my point, because when you're, that is why when John says that if you consider to have City of Toronto or GTA at least to be a separate province or part of the major district, that is because of that, you cannot deal with the same issue in Waterloo and Toronto City of Toronto at the same level of the, like, blindfolded. We are getting close to the end of the program, do you have any questions first before we, we have about six, seven minutes?
Well, I don't know that I have any specific questions, but, and I would say that I really enjoyed having you here this evening.
Thank you, thank you, it's been great.
And I really wish you well wherever Karen Stints goes next.
Thank you.
You know, I think that you clearly have, you know, left a very positive mark on the city of Toronto and although I do believe in term limits, I know I said I was glad to see you go, I didn't really mean that.
No, I know what you meant.
I wish you could stay, Karen.
But it's my time. Thank you.
Well, if it is a term.
And I'm looking forward to actually the election in Ward 16.
Where do you see yourself? Well, actually, do you want to share your views, if any, on the upcoming election for mayor?
No, I think that it's going to be interesting, I think it's not over yet and I'm, I'm curious, I'm as curious as anyone about election night.
And who's going to win the NFL this year?
Oh, you know, that's a good question, that's a good question.
Take a second to think about it.
I'm going to say Green Bay.
Green Bay? My God, you really are following this. It's amazing.
Well, you can predict who wins the football, however, you can't predict.
I'm not going to make a prediction on the mayor.
Or at least something that you have 11 years experience in.
No, you know, when it comes to the fours, I, I don't make predictions.
Based on your answer, I can predict something for sure that you're coming back to the politics. For that reason, I am, I predict that on camera for everybody, that we will see in one level or another, you will be back in the politics.
Perhaps, perhaps running for mayor.
Or, no, it's 2015 is close for the federal election.
No, that much I can guarantee, that's not going to happen.
Well, you know, as you said, you can never say no.
Never say never, right.
Do you have a message for the people who, your constituents or anyone who is interested or has been interested or will be interested in your future?
I, no, my only message is that it, we need people to be engaged and stay engaged in the city and come out and vote and make sure that even after they vote, they're communicating with their councillor because if they want to be represented, they have to make their voices heard.
That's great.
Oh, we are living in an age, I think, of extreme cynicism and disengagement.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, thank you very much for coming and first of all, accepting our invitation and being here and, and thank you for all of this information. I'm pretty sure everybody, those who watch the program or will watch the program, will really benefit about the information that you put in from inside for the outside so they can have some sort of the notion how it works. Thank you for being with us tonight and please engage, vote, help your candidates, be a volunteer and even become a candidate. Good night.
Good night.